I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move to approve that agenda. It's approved. The agenda is additional certified personal after consideration. I see that through.
Sir, is that... Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Republic. As we move on to the recognition of teachers in leadership.
And Jenny Hands, our Career and Technical Education Coordinator, is here to back us.
Hi. I would like to introduce some of our career in tech ed teachers who are representing our district and our areas as representatives on their affiliate boards in the state of Kansas. So with career and technical education, we have Kansas Association of Career and Technical Education. And underneath that, there are quite a few affiliate groups. And the teachers before you here were selected by their colleagues around the state to hold a leadership position. So I'd like to introduce Jeanette Turpin, Jane Schneider, Pat Benjohn, Dustin Algrim, and also Chuy Burnall, who could not be here tonight. So go ahead, would you tell us what you do?
Yep. So I'm Jeanette Turpin. I teach the Early Childhood Education Career Pathway and the Teach and Train Career Pathway. And I was elected as Vice President of District F, which is Southwest Kansas, for CATFAX, which is the association with family and consumer science. And so when we were at the meeting, they were talking about really exciting things like possibly changing some of the family and consumer science curriculum and getting more industry involved in it at the state level. So it's pretty exciting. Lots of new stuff happening.
I'm Jane Schneider, and I teach in the Health Science Academy. And we are part of a group that falls under all the small little groups in career tech ed. And one of those happens to be health science, and it's called New and Related Services. And I'm the president-elect of that one.
Pat Benjohn, Ed Education Teacher in the Trades Academy. Southwest District, I'm Vice President for the KAE. And there's 24 teachers in our district, and I think that's 19 different schools with chapters. So I represent Southwest District with our state of the seven districts to meet and discuss policies and things like that.
And I'm Dustin Algrim. I'm in the Public Service Academy, and I teach with the finance and marketing pathways. And we, probably the smallest affiliate of KBOA is ours. What I'm gonna do is try to create more unity with that across the state of Kansas. And then they also kind of liked how we had brought the community into our school. And that's something that I'm gonna bring to other teachers and give them ideas on how to do that, to bring business leaders or either just people in the industry to help share ideas with our students.
And Jesse Burnall, who couldn't be here, is the president-elect of KIEA, which is Kansas Industrial Educators Association. We love acronyms. They're hard to keep straight. But these guys have done a great job in representing us at the state level. It's pretty awesome. So thank you for the recognition.
Is there anything to do with this? Are you speaking? Yes, could you come around? I don't mean my hands. Look, I didn't do it. Oh, yes. Thank you.
I'm just happy for your involvement, David, and for congratulations on your election.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good, how are you? How about you, you're gonna do some cool stuff. Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah, I get it. Yeah.
Jean, I might just comment. Teachers are busy people anyway. And when these ladies and gentlemen take on that extra responsibility to serve their colleague, that puts even greater amount of time. And certainly, we really appreciate that. But I think it speaks really highly that we've got five Garden City High School teachers in our career in tech ed academies who have been selected by their peers to serve in those leadership roles. And that's pretty awesome. It's great for our kids and for the rest of the staff. So thank you for all that you do and for being willing to give that extra time and effort to support our profession.
And thank you from the board to invite me. There's a common misconception that teaching is just a 7:30 to 3:30 job. This is, it's really a misconception. And I know that you all spend many hours of your own time doing other things. I think that's your classroom, your days in the classroom with the students. So we really appreciate it, and we're very proud that you're in our staff. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm impressed with the first good. It's our year, the two-year rotation for the building presentation. I have some members of my leadership team. And that is Adriana Caro. She's an eighth grade EOL teacher, who's also kind of part of two of the things, videos that you're gonna see tonight, short videos that kids did. And Carla Algrim, interventionist. And Mary Guiman. We have a band concert going on tonight, so it's pulled a lot of people in different directions. Obviously, parents and kids. Just like Mrs. Clifford said there, kids and teachers have lots of things going on, especially when you hit middle school level. They are busy. It's just to warm up before they hit high school and really get really busy. So first video, what we did is we gave the task to our enrichment class, which is a yearbook class that Mrs. Caro teaches. And we told the kids that we had our board presentation, and we wanted to have them put together what it looked like in their eyes to be a student horse good for a day. And so she grouped the kids into some different groups and just kind of let freedom with the kids. Let them go with, come up with how they want to do it. She gave them a timeframe of about three minutes to do this video. And all the videos done by each group of kids was great. And I'm sure you would love to see all five of them, but we're not gonna do that for you now. We're gonna let you see two of them to keep you a little shorter tonight. But the kids did a great job, and it's teachers like Mrs. Caro that kind of give kids that direction and let them take off and go with it. So we'll start it off with the first one. Okay, here's the second one.
What are the points?
A sweep. A sweep is when you will take a student who's late to class to the campus security and to explain why they're late. As a board member, we know that you don't always get the opportunity to be in the classrooms and in the schools as much as you'd like. But I think it's a pretty good snapshot. It's not everything. There's a lot of things that go on. We're pretty proud that, I think, we, our goal behind what we do with kids and what we try to talk to them about is that we're preparing you in two years to, say, in high school, be ready for high school. And you kind of see some of the things that we think are important to make them transition to be successful when they go to high school. And so we have some of those foundational pieces. You should have seen that some structure within the hallways on how we get kids to places, to the morning procedures. They're either in the cafeteria eating breakfast, or they're in the gymnasium before they go. They're not getting to roam the building, so they don't, we want our teachers to be prepared and ready for the day. Kids do get to go see teachers, but they'll have to make arrangements, just like they will when they hit high school. We also have the procedures at lunch. To feed over around 350 to 350-plus kids in a 23-minute lunch shift. You have to have some organization. You saw the kids in the line, and they get in, and they get a sit on either side. We still want our kids to be kids at that time, but we also want our kids to do things the way their parents expected them when they sent them to school. Just like, and we ask them to talk like you would if you were in a restaurant. That's not always the case, and you definitely know when it's being served something that they're not necessarily a fan of because the noise level gets louder sooner. But our kids do a great job with that. You saw one of our teachers, Mr. Ortiz, an eighth grade Soul Springs teacher, talk about sweeps. This is something that we did as a building six years ago when we were still at A. Hubert. We planned for that transition when we were going to the, to what was the old Garden City High School. Knowing that we had some staff that were a part of that building and the size of the building, how are you gonna make sure kids have that sense of urgency, get where they're supposed to be? So we do a lot of training with our kids on how to be there. And we have a start on time. We did a book study by Randy Sprig, who the district is bringing in later this year. We found that very important, so we did a start on time book study with that about getting to school on time, working with the emergency officer, working with parents, providing Friday afternoon school for those kids that are coming tardy, trying to give education, support, and ways to prevent that not being on time. And then we did the sweep time, which is what you saw Mr. Ortiz doing. And what we do there is we have a handful of teachers and paraprofessionals that are on maybe a planned period at that time, and they have a position in a hallway spread throughout the building, and they have that area. So Mr. Ortiz, what you saw there was in the north hallway around the language arts classrooms is where he was at. So he was over at that area, and he had a pretty good area to kind of watch for. And if the bell rang and the kids were in that area and they were not to class on time, we sweep them. And what we do by doing that, we take them, and they fill out a short little form. And we know they're missing some class time, but we think it's important that they reflect on why they're late, how they can prevent that happening again. And then that is sent home to parents. And each step along the way, if we keep showing tardies throughout the day, then we're gonna have additional consequences. So right now, our enrollment's right, 700 kids, eight passing periods throughout the day. That's 5,600 opportunities for a kid to be tardy through the day. We average about three tardies per day, which I think is pretty amazing, which is less than 1% of our kids being tardy. And if you can't be on time, then you're not setting yourself up for success when you get to your, when you get to the high school, especially when you get up to the employment world. And I think that's something that we think is important for our kids. And you see a sense of urgency out of the kids. And that's what you saw, you heard Mr. Ortiz, I don't know if you caught him saying, "Pump your arms." So he's trying to get the kid, get where the purpose. So he said that to the kid. And you also saw kids running, which I don't have a problem with as long as they're getting, and they know that they need to be on time. We see the same thing in the mornings when our parents are dropping kids off. They're running to get to the door, and they want to make sure that they're there because they don't want to be swept. And I think it's also put some accountability back to parents about, we need to, we need to drop our kid off that if Horse Good starts at 8 o'clock and Garden City High School doesn't start till 8:10, then we're gonna drop our kid off at Horse Good before we go to Garden City High School. And so that's helping some of our parents with that. And that, and what we believe is just some pieces that will help them be successful as they proceed into high school and then on the line. So we think those are some important foundational pieces. And the other piece about that is, is we strongly believe, and I quiz my new teachers that we hire, I firmly believe that if I have the opportunity to have a recruit in while school's in session, our likelihood of hiring that teacher goes up by them seeing the foundations and the structures that take place in our building. Because they see that this is important. They see that there's an expectation on what we expect kids to do and where to be. And the feedback from those people is, "I chose this building, and this is the big reason why. Because I saw this in place, and I knew that the kids are held accountable here." So that is a good recruiting tool for us. And so if we were to see opportunities, Mr. Hogan, to get teachers in before school is out, we definitely would appreciate that. So, but we hope that we don't have to hire too many. Questions for us?
Well, I think that those were great videos. I'm really impressed with the students did that on their own, basically. And it really brings a couple of things to mind. And one is that if, that's information that would be really helpful to the community and to the parents to see how orderly and how, you didn't hear the sound part of it, though, because of the music, but it really looks very organized and very orderly there. And students really know what to do and it's not chaotic anymore. Those are things that it would be really nice if they could get into our website or maybe live in our, yes, or...
Our intentions have this on the Horse Good website.
That's very good. The students that did that, I guess, they don't want to go into that broadcasting, radio, TV trap when they get to the high school, because they did a great job.
They do. And it takes teachers like Mrs. Caro to provide those kids that guidance to just go that, go that direction. They're not feeling, you have to have your thumb on them all the time. Our kids do some amazing things, and we see it across the district in all buildings. But I think we're pretty proud of our kids, and I think that we do a good job of getting them prepared to go to Garden City High School.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to read, approve the consent agenda, agenda item E1 through 4B.
The sound.
Any second?
Second.
Second, through discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We're moving to the discussion items. We have the record report, and we road map.
Okay, first of all, I would like to introduce a couple of people that I have with me. I have Melanie Marsey. She's the Kansas Reading Roadmap Coordinator for Victor Anella's School. And Tiffany Lawson. She is the program manager for Southwest Kansas, and she collaborates with our coordinators quite a bit. She probably touches base with them once a week. So we have Kansas Reading Roadmap at five of our schools. Steve went to a meeting probably about a year ago, had found out a little bit of information about Kansas Reading Roadmap, and came back and asked, you know, if we'd heard about it. And at that time, we contacted the Kansas Reading Roadmap people and said, you know, we're interested, people that would like to check into this. And we invited all of our buildings to just come for an informational meeting to find out about it, to see if they would be interested in having this in their building. We had five schools that were interested, and five schools you see listed there. Kansas Reading Roadmap told us that we could have three schools participate, and we begged for five, so they gave us five. So thank you for doing that. Program criteria for them is that over 50% of our students in the school would qualify for free or reduced lunch meals. Also, that the district has to be participating in the MTSS program. That's an intervention program that's recommended by Kansas, and the district was. Now, the students who qualify for the buildings, they have to qualify based on their data. But an added benefit to that is if they have a sibling who is, wants to join too, the sibling's allowed to do that. Just to give you an idea of what the budget is from last summer to this summer, KRR will be giving us in the amount of $705,000. That includes the Kansas Reading Roadmap coordinators that we have at every school. And I apologize that they can't be here tonight, but some of them are running their family engagement program. And we also have one on the turnip area. So one of the things that we ask for is that we are K4 buildings in most cases, and we hate to leave our fourth graders out. Most reading programs say that they want kids on grade level by the end of third grade, but we know that some kids are not there by fourth grade. So we begged to have fourth grade involved, and they said if we would throw in a little bit of transportation costs, that they would allow us to have fourth grade. So we have kindergarten through fourth grades in most buildings. Okay, there's four components to the KRR program. There's the summer school program, the after-school program that happens during the school year, the life family involvement program, and they're gonna explain a little bit about that. And then the fact that the Kansas Reading Roadmap coordinators are involved in whatever is happening throughout the school day, which is something we've known about before. We had an after-school program called Project Effort several years ago. This is different than Project Effort because Project Effort was just, just a program that was separate from what happened during the day. What's good about this program is that everything that happens during the day is connected with everything that happens during the summer, everything that happens after school. They look at student data, they compare student data, they're talking about it all the time. So would you talk about summer school?
Okay. There's different components to summer school. They have the SRAB, which is the Read Allowed, where they have, the teacher goes and reads a story to them, and they work in vocabulary words. There's another section that is the ISR, which is the Individual Skills, and that is the phonics. And they are put in the phonics group according to how they scored on the QPS, which is part of the, yeah, intervention thing. And then the last one that they have is 40 minutes of IIR, which is independent reading. So if they are doing, depending on what quad sort they're in with their aims, will determine if they're in the IIR or the ISR. There's also, in the summer, they do math, and there's two 40-minute math blocks. And everybody is, like, all first graders are in the same math block, but they might be in a different phonics group or a different SRAB group. And if you can see, there is no rotations on Fridays. Fridays are fun days. We get to go do fun things, and the kids really love that. Every week, they're like, "Where are we going? What are we gonna do?" And the last part in the afternoon, we have the STEM, which is Legos. We do community service, and we do plays and other things.
Looks pretty structured, and it is. But I can tell you from teachers I talked to over the summer, they loved it. They said, you know, it was more relaxed. It was, kids were doing specific things, were very focused, that it was a lot of fun sprinkled in also. And again, I'll compare that to Project Effort. We were given a lot of money for Project Effort, but there was never anything very substantial that happened within that. We had to figure it out. This has been all laid out for them, research-based programs. And from what I've seen, the kids are really enjoying it.
I will say that I had a student, a fourth grade student, that was telling his classmates, "You've gotta do KRR. It is so much fun." And he didn't qualify, so he was kind of bummed because he didn't get to go. But he was pushing, and he was telling his whole class, "You've gotta do this. This is so much fun." So they really enjoy it. And there's a totally different atmosphere with the KRR program because it's more laid back, they can enjoy themselves, they can walk faster through the hallway and not be at a level zero. So they enjoy that.
I had the coordinator send me some pictures. This is just a picture of one of the rotations that occurred this summer. You can see the kids are relaxed, they're listening to the story.
Yeah, this is the SRAB part.
There they are in the small room rotation. There's their STEM project, the Legos. They were really looking forward to that right now. This is probably the community service.
No.
No, that's not...
This is Fun Friday. We had a water, water game, so...
That was yours?
That was mine. And we had the fire department come out and hose the kids down. They loved it. And this, and there's always team building activities. And in the morning, Mr. Dard would have different, he would have the different teams compete against each other.
Okay, Friday field trips. You've kind of heard a little bit about that, but I've just put together a... You've kind of heard a little bit about that, but I've just put together a list of some of the things that they participated in. Heard really good comments about those. One of the things they were required to do was community service. And Jamie Schwer from Richard Walker sent me these pictures, which you can kind of see from start to finish, what they did with planting a garden. A lot of steps along the way and they learned a lot about community service. What Jamie did, she went out, she knew she wasn't going to have the money to do everything she wanted to do, so she went out on her own time and was able to get some donations from the community.
And this was the community service that we did at VO. The kids decided they were going to do lemonade and they gave lemonade to the parents that came to pick them up. And we had some police officers come that day and so they gave them lemonade. After school, we do the SRAB again. And it's, after school, these sessions are just thirty minutes versus the forty minutes. We have the phonics, which is the ISR. And this time around, we're doing the ninety-five percent phonics program. We also have the independent reading, which is the IIR, thirty minutes. And so the kids are either going to be in IIR or ISR. And then we have the healthy kids, which is like a phys ed type thing. And then we have snacks that we provide for the kids before we get started in the evening. And you will see, there is no math during the school year.
I am very excited about the ninety-five percent phonics. This is a program by Susan Hall that we've been wanting to get in the district for a very long time, but it's very expensive, so at least five persons have opportunity in that and so that's pretty neat.
Life program. This is something that's new. It used to be called FAST, right?
Yeah.
And it's, at VO, we have ours on Tuesday night. That's why I'm able to be here tonight. Gertrude Walker and Florence Wilson have theirs tonight. It's an eight-week program. They're supposed to commit for eight weeks. We start the day off, or the evening off, with a meal. We work on the tune listening, which is a hard thing to do, two minutes listening, not making any comments. We also have a child-led play part to it. We have a section where the kids are playing and the parents are talking, doing discussion. The fifth night is literacy night and we talk to the parents about the MTSS and explain stuff. And then every night, when they get ready to leave, we give them a departing gift. So, and the kids are kind of excited about that part too. And my group, we started it off with, we had family shields. So the first night, they got together and they designed their own shield that we are going to put up in the hallway. So, and I'm not sure, I think some of them do like a family pillow, some do family photo frames and stuff. So, do you want to add to this?
Life, I just want to touch on what it stands for. Life stands for Literacy Integrated into Family Engagement. And like Melanie had said before, it had previously been FAST. And what we did was, we were partnering, partnering with a company called FAST. And we decided to bring the family engagement into our KRR branch, so we were in control of kind of how the night went. And instead of using the FAST curriculum, how they set it up, we kind of set it up to structure our KRR model and to integrate the reading and the literacy into the families' lives. It's kind of our first year doing this. The tune listening, like Melanie touched on, that is one of the big parts of it. We set the parents up with each other and they actually have to talk for about five minutes back and forth with each other without any interruptions. And then they get to sit with their child and they get to read books. And it's just really kind of interesting to see them bond over the books, which is really neat.
I was able to attend their Saturday session when they were trading on this. I thought I would just go for a little bit. Told my husband I would meet him noon for lunch and I didn't want to leave because I was getting so much out of this. I was thinking, you know, for so many years, we've had family engagement, but it's not really been targeted or focused. This is very focused. It's building bridges, it's listening to their kids and really listening to their kids without interruptions. I thought I could really use that, you know? So I, that's, that's a wonderful program in my eyes.
Nice. For the parent discussion, are there certain topics that you discuss or is that just going to open?
It's, it's open that the parents can ask. And we do have, there's four members to the team. We have a parent liaison, is what they call liaisons?
Liaisons or partners.
Yeah. There's a parent person, there's a community person, there's a recreation person and the school. So, and I'm really lucky because I have a really good school member.
So there's a picture of the family engagement opportunity. And part of the beauty of the whole thing is the Kansas Reading Roadmap coordinator is there for the school during the day, after school during the summer, but they take part in all of the meetings that happen. They take part of the building leadership team, they're part of the PLCs, they talk about student data, students who are going in and out of interventions and just trying to make sure that everything's connected for that kid. So, anyway. Any questions for us?
It's pretty, it's really exciting stuff. That is three, did I get that right? Three hours a week?
For the life program.
For the life program?
Yeah.
And, and so this is during the school year? This is every evening after school?
No. We have, there's eight weeks. It's an eight-week program. So we are on our fourth week at Victor Onella's.
Eight consecutive?
Eight consecutive weeks, although we are taking a week off for spring, or for conferences, but, and then we'll start up another eight-week program next semester. And they do have a graduation at the end of the eight weeks. And once they've graduated, it's, what's that program called? Because we're new to this part.
Once the families have graduated, they move into a program called Friends for Life. And this is where they kind of meet to keep going and to keep building the connections that they've made during their life sessions. They get to choose what they want to do for these life, afterlife, these Friends for Life activities. We went through a lot of different names and so as I stand up here explaining it, I have to think of the right name. So in these sessions, what they do is they really get to plan their day however they want. We give them a budget of about a hundred dollars and they can go, you know, they can go to the zoo and they can have a picnic, just so long as they're getting together and connecting again after their program ends.
And then there's a summer component and then during the school year is eight weeks?
No, during the school, it's fifty days per semester. So, and we do not meet on Fridays.
Okay. And so there's a, there's a summer component and then you come into the school year?
Right, correct.
Okay. And I heard you say, I think on the summer, that math is a part of it?
Right. Math is, there's eighty minutes of math in the summer that we don't have.
And routing, what does that have to do with literacy?
Well, because it's a long day, it's too, it's really kind of too long of a day for just reading, so they add the math into that.
Yeah, I think it's fabulous.
Yeah.
That's great. And then one more. The funding for this comes from where?
The funding comes from DCF, out of Topeka. Well, I mean, it's from the state, Department of Children and Families.
Department of Education.
Yeah. Children and Families.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of said in the math aspect, there's a lot more learning problems, what we've spent, is that what they're working on? And so it's sort of?
So, yeah, they kind of combine whatever they learn over the course of their school year, it's basically a review. We're not, we don't bring the kids in to teach a new concept for the math. We're just reviewing it to prevent the summer slide. So we use a lot of hands-on manipulatives and word problems, you know? And there's also addition and subtraction, but we really do focus on hands-on and using the manipulatives.
They're using a program called Do the Math?
Yeah.
Thank you, I can't remember that.
Which is a program that we have as an intervention during the school year, so they're using that also during the summer.
So how many students are participating each eight weeks?
Well, for the, the life program, it's, we don't have it where we want to have it. We should have eight families and we're having a hard time getting the eight families to commit at this point. But it's new. Once we get going, it'll, it'll, it'll pick up. The after-school though, I have seventy kids enrolled.
I have eleven, seventy.
Yes.
So the limit is actually seventy-five.
Mm-hmm. So, and I'm always, they're always saying, can I? I'm like, I don't have enough tutors. So, and then in the summer, I had, I think seventy-four kids, so.
And how did the kids get selected for that program?
Based on their scores on the aims test. We start with that.
Do you invite those students to participate?
We invite those students, yes. And then like was mentioned, if they have a sibling that qualified, but they didn't qualify, we can invite them to come. And those kids are usually put in the IIR.
One of the things I'm interested in, Melanie, is if this program is really making a difference or not. So I'm looking at what kind of data can we collect to see, compare our non-KRR students to our KRR students to see if that's making an impact or not. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping to call the person that's in charge of the KU grant, because this is a grant program through KU, they're providing the evaluation for it, to see what kind of data that they can share with us. Or, you know, maybe they can do work for us, I don't know.
And actually, after your first year of programming for KRR, we will submit all the data that we've collected to KU and they will put together an evaluation that we will be able to bring out and go over.
I did have a question since you've already identified students who participate in this. Do you have sort of anecdotally a feeling of whether the increased involvement in reading has carried over during the school day? Because that's a significant amount of time that they're spending practicing those skills. And it seems like maybe once they get voted in, they will be more interested all day forward.
We had a few instances. We had a little girl this summer that she wasn't going to pass the rubric to go into second grade last year. And after the summer school program, her mom went, we tested, I tested her and she went through a funk. So I'm thinking that that's probably the case, you know, the sort of data that we collected involved with us, students who visit mom at least once or twice during the summer seem to be better than those who don't do the reading at all. So, I don't know, do you guys have any data to come up with?
I do know that there's not much data behind it, but I do know that kids, once they've gone through the program, you know, you do see them more excited about reading. A student who may not have liked reading at all can eventually come into the classroom and pick up a book and, you know, have to be told to put it down. And so I do believe that the program does help with their confidence in reading.
Jamie Schwer from Richard Walker said something else. Just kind of explained that about a student that they had seen that had increased confidence in reading. The teacher had commented on the reference that he had seen with that student. So I'm hoping when they do their building presentation for a year or two, that's an example that they share.
That's great because it does seem that at that age, there's a big one. They get to that point and then they'll enjoy reading, you know, sort of on their own, reading a lot and getting further into it. And will you be tracking any data a year or two after they're completing?
I'm likely, I don't know, I want to come up with a comment to do that because I'm curious as to how this might sustain itself as we move forward.
Have you experienced diversity of participation from parents and students? Is it pretty broad based?
I would, I would say so. Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Do we have any language issues that are affecting parents who are not participating?
Well, we have, we do have forms that we send home that are always translated. So, and then?
But if you come in, it's only an English.
Right. Well, that's for the life program and we're just starting that part up. So I think we're looking into getting a translator. I know I have a couple that are, that are Hispanic and I do have, my parent person does relate or can translate, so.
If needed, we do, we do provide for translators. Yeah, so they don't feel left out. So it's open to everyone.
And we do have one at Richard Walker program.
Yeah, she's been with us by the program.
Sounds like a great program. People are really enjoying it, getting a lot out of it. One last question that I just had. For the life program, do the participants, do kids have to attend one of the classes?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
I just think we'll move on to the calendar discussion.
Okay. So I know we talked extensively about the calendar, but the committee is about to start their work for this upcoming calendar year, so I wanted to bring it back to the board, give the board opportunity to have any inputs before we start the battle, give a little background. So the calendar committee is made up of twenty-one people, three classified, nine teachers, three building administrators, six parents or community members. And then there are some advisory members of our board. And then we have representative from the capital schools, from UST 363, and also representative from the community college. So we have working those things. Teachers are selected by the DCA. You can, based on different levels that they represent, the high school teachers, intermediate, middle or kind of group together, and then elementary. We take nomination, if you will, for classified folks. And then the district administration will appoint or ask volunteers from the building administrator representatives. And then we would both kind of commonly agree on parents or community members. And so we have six of those slots, four of which are open. So we have people that you can make a connection with. Certainly let me know, we can reach out to them. And also we can go to our site councils, the live committee, to give recommendations from some of our site council members to see if they have any knowledge of this. So the charge of the goal of the committee is to create calendars, the first of which is the traditional calendar that meets all of the requirements of the negotiated agreements. And that happens over time, but we do a lot of things with that. Certainly we'll take the board's input and that's kind of why we're bringing it up tonight. In addition, we'll send out staff surveys. If there's any question there, like the last time we did the old calendar, we talked about a couple of these questions beyond, what days it will be, those kinds of things. So there's a number of questions that we'll ask the staff and try to get their input. Another example would be holidays, what holidays we're interested in. Start time, I know is kind of a hotbed topic this year, so we'll look at that as well. But that will all be through the calendar committee. So typically we give two traditional calendars out to the staff, we all know those, and then send them out for votes, I can vote on. And then if the committee chooses, then we can start working on an alternative calendar as well. And we've had that for several years. And again, that goes, then it gets to the traditional calendar and another vote and a new calendar, of course, is the one that recommended before. So I know we talked a little bit about it before retreats in terms of the calendar and so I wanted to bring it back tonight and see if the board had any inputs. And as we begin this process, it's not, we have voting action tonight, just one that I like to open up the discussion. Before you guys get started, I might just clarify what Mr. Hobin says. Start time is not, he's talking about the time of year, not the time of day. So the calendar committee does not deal with what time school starts every day, but they do deal with the first day of school.
Any questions for the discussion?
What day, what day do you guys meet?
Say that again.
What day do we guys meet?
It's random, based on scheduling, but I want to say it's on Mondays is what we've chosen to do at this point, obviously, of course, for meetings. But I have a? we've chosen to do at this point, obviously, of course, we're being, but I have a little more defined calendar that I can share with you.
Please, or the board's?
We normally have two board members on there, or just one?
Yeah, we had two in the past, but I think we just had one sign up for this time.
There was only one line.
Only one slot?
On the sheet, so, because I was going to sign up, but there was only one line, so I thought the rules had changed from the negotiated agreement, we could only have one, so.
Not now, we've had two in the past.
Are you interested, are you interested, so if I can participate, I would love to. If there's no one else, then I won't.
Well, I would certainly participate if he'd be, but I've been on it before, and so, just simply watch and listen.
And it's a really good committee, I mean, there's a lot of people involved, and you can think of a committee that size, but it's, it's really been good, lots of good healthy discussion, and like I said, participation has been really good, too, so it is a good committee to work on.
Well, I appreciate it, because I really can't think of many other things that we do that the community is so dependent upon, because I know that people's workplace arrangements, and, and a lot of things in our community that sort of are dependent upon what our calendars, so it has a big impact on our community. Thank you for volunteering. Any other questions?
Probably sounds a little warped, but I'm excited to see what they come up with. That is a long process and a lot of careful discussion by that committee, and as you say, it's so important, and so the time invested is amazing, and, but it's, I thank them for it because it's so important.
That affects everybody, too, and so I appreciate that you're trying to gain input from, from all the different parties that might have.
It is a thankless job, I mean, there's, you know, you're always going to have reasons from one group or another that doesn't like a particular calendar, but, you know, it doesn't go without lots of discussion. And there's lots to it, balancing semesters and choosing holidays that we want to take off, and of course, and the start date of the year, and how that's been prepared for a little bit over the past, so, there's a lot that goes into it.
There's a history there, and I, I heard that as well this year, why are we starting so early in the year, particularly compared to our counterparts in the area? And so, I think it's important for them, there's a lot of pieces to put together, and so that's why I'm real interested to hear what they come up with. I'm not sure what the options are. At the end of the day, if you want a certain list of things to be included, you've got to find a place for them. And so you either extend your workday, or you, well, there's just a lot of options there, and some of the alternative calendars are very interesting, too. So, um, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with you.
Keep them coming.
I think, though, I mean, the consensus has generally been, we want to see the collaboration time in the traditional calendar, and I don't, you know, that's, opinion has changed, it hasn't changed with me, so I hope that whatever the traditional calendar is, traditional in, in that it's not necessarily what we do every year, but it's what fits the negotiated agreement, maybe look at different tactics, so we can get that collaboration time.
Anybody else have any input in terms of collaboration?
I would agree, though, I, I, and I like the idea that it's flexible, and we can address things as they come out each year, because what worked ten years ago isn't necessarily what's going to work now, so having some flexibility every year to look at that, and even though it's a tremendous amount of time that I provide a lot of people, it, it's really big help.
Well, we try to do, you know, as much as we can, communicate, and where people understand, not with the process, but, you know, fourteen scheduled holidays that are available to take, but for every one of those holidays, you're going to add on the front side or backside to our school year, and, you know, getting people to understand the logistics of it, is, you know, again, why it's important to have, you know, as a very large committee, why it's important to have that many people who can lay, or go out and talk about that to their stakeholders that they represent.
Mr. Hogan did a nice job outlining the process, and the board has a history of valuing the work of the committee. So I, I think it's important that if there's priorities that you see for the committee, that you share those with your, Mr. Hogan or with your representatives, so that those can be really discussed in the committee, and, because ultimately, you get the authority at the end of the day to set the calendar, as long as it complies with the negotiated agreement. But, you know, if you, if you just choose to do that and ignore completely what the committee does, that, that, you know, make it pretty tough to recruit committee members in the future, and I certainly wouldn't advocate that. So if there's things, and Laura, I think we talked about it at the retreat, you kind of brought it up here, the idea of creating that ongoing professional development time using our existing in-service days, if that's a, if that's a priority for the board, then certainly the board's representatives and Mr. Hogan can, can convey that. And I think I've heard from a couple of you, and I'm seeing other heads nod, but what, what we really need to know is, is that a priority for the traditional calendar options this year?
I think, I think we were really clear at the retreat that that's the priority, and I think that's what we need to see in any proposal coming from a traditional calendar. Would anyone disagree that that was kind of what we discussed at the retreat? I would agree that it's a priority, and probably one of the more important priorities, but I don't think it's the only priority. And I do think we need to be cognizant of the impact on staff, you know, particularly on students and their parents in terms of making sure that they, they have childcare arrangements, and that we don't juggle it so much that it's difficult for anybody to plan, because a lot of our parents are working, and they really have their control over, over their hours, or when they're free, and we just don't want students sort of on their own, and that, that would be a concern, I think, and it's not, you know, it doesn't rise to the same level, but it is something I would think about.
Yeah, some of the interests, I think, were expressed in alternative calendar concepts, and so I, I'm sure hope that we can go down that road as well. That was part of my reason for bringing in helping board members, a lot of that, not so much to influence the outcome, and simply to make sure that communication is there. And, and so I think that's just ideal. And beyond that, I don't know, we have spent a lot of time talking about this, particularly at the retreat, so I think that message is there, I don't know what more you could say, I don't know what sort of it is, except for, you know, layout, you know, keep going on that. When the, when's the first meeting ever?
Uh, I think Mr. Mark will start with the first meeting, bounty again, second iteration. The board has two priorities, and putting together our survey, getting that to the staff right away, get that input, that's, that's a huge process in and of itself, going back through all the information that we get, so that will happen as, as we can make it happen. And I'll clarify one thing, so myself, I chair the committee, but I'm an honorary member of board members, an honorary member, and so are the lively people from the different entities, the capital school, the junior college, and the whole thing as well, so getting their input, sort of those things, match with what's going on in the community as a whole, and I'm an honorary member there as well.
Do we have anyone from the Y or the R?
Historically, yeah, Crystal Richardson from the Y has been a part of that, and that's kind of helped with some of the, I think, the communities brought up, but after school, and really looking into alternative calendar options, with the early release of collaboration time, she's certainly had some good input to that, so, and she's still on it.
I would suggest maybe we contact the, the R, too. The community has a history of supporting when school's out, and coming up with different things, like the R did playing the day for parent future conferences, you know, the Y's done different things, so it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, you know, those things might not be coming, because since you make a move, I'm sure that it'll get some support from those other agencies, so. I just have a question, I know, one of the things that people always want to find out is what is the calendar? What, what is about the timeframe of when you would normally get it? I know there's a lot of variables involved, but at what point, in March or when, would it really, probably would be seeing it, having it available to people?
In terms of, well, we're-
Firewise, yes.
Our goal is almost to try to bring you something in March. There's been years where, maybe that was a means we're leaning, but we, we try to shoot for March, but a lot of it just kind of stands on how, you know, how everything goes, probably have the traditional calendar figured out by Christmas time. And remember, it's an option for the, the, the calendar, we can do a, an alternate, alternative calendar, if the traditional calendar moves in the direction that people are interested in, maybe that, those alternative, that alternative idea, they want to, they want to wait for a year to, I mean, so that could speed up getting that information out a little bit, too.
No, I think that we appreciate, you know, because they, because people want to make plans and everything, so I think that's very important, at least March or November.
Just a question, did, did we not do a survey of how people voted last, last time, of who in the band or the groups, and try to find out why, how the calendar passed, or why it didn't pass? Did we not do that last?
We didn't do an exit, or an, or an year starting based on the results.
We used to do that, right?
We might have, we might have done that once, I don't think we regularly did, but I think, I watched one who solicited some feedback about what they, what people didn't like about the alternative, but I don't know if we did it all the time.
Did you guys do a, and a calendar committee meeting of gathering thoughts of why you thought it had, or didn't have?
We did.
Or not, I don't know, did not run. I guess we'll move on?
It might be helpful to consider for this year, though, just kind of assess the process and assess the results.
So it seemed like we had a lot of meetings, and then the end result is, we do the same thing we've been doing since the course started, so, you know, why, the last couple of years, it's like, you know, why, why do all this work, the teachers are just going to vote like they all did, I'm not saying that's wrong or right, I'm just saying, that's a lot of meetings, I've been to those on the community side, and I've been to them as a board member, going every other Monday, or, you know, every third Monday, whatever the meeting kind is, that's a lot of meetings, a lot of input, a lot of conversation going on, and it seems like, as far as I remember, it's always been, you know, the same thing.
Sure.
And the teachers are voting, because they're the ones working on calendars.
Right. I think part of it-
I guess my, my thought is, you know, why go through all that process, and maybe it has to happen, so that we are doing the right thing, just a thought.
Well, I think it's certainly valuable, and I think I can address just from last year specifically, you know, we were a little later last year in terms of getting a calendar, even to four, as a recommendation, it was pretty late in the year, maybe even, I don't want to say, I think it was like last year, April, even last year, because of the issues that we had with voting, and those kinds of things. So, so that part of it really was pretty late, and to turn around and, and bring that committee together, it was more of a timing thing than anything, I mean, it's been a tremendous amount of time upfront, and so.